Regular meeting number five will now come to order. Can we please stand for the playing of the National Anthem? Councilmember Remi, would you please lead us in pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening council is pleased to have Pastor Howard Washington, the senior pastor of Second Baptist Church, to pray with us this evening. Pastor, welcome to council.
Let us pray. God our Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come into your presence one more time. You are our God and our help in ages past. You are our help for years to come. Be thou our guide as we shall live in our eternal home. We pray your blessings upon President Harden and each council member. We pray your blessings upon Mayor Ginther and this great city of Columbus. God, as we go forward tonight, we pray that we would remain in the center of your will. Give us courage where we need courage. Give us peace where we need peace and wisdom for the decisions that are at hand. And we thank you for your grace and peace that will continue to be with us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, favor, Remi Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion to begin with the reading of the journal? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, favor, Remi Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. This week's communications received by the city clerks office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
No, at this time.
Are there resolutions by members of council? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, President Harden. I have a brief announcement today. I'd like to invite up Dr. John Stanford, interim superintendent at our Columbus City Schools. Columbus City Schools has designated this week, February 4th, this week, to be Relationship Week, their third annual, to help highlight the importance of creating a supportive, inclusive, and positive learning environment for students. And each day, students are being encouraged to participate in activities that motivate, empower, and support one another. So I want to thank James Ragland, board member, for bringing this week of activities to city council's attention. And Dr. John Stanford is here tonight with us to talk about the week. These lessons for students can be incorporated into our own lives as well. I want us all to remember that. The world can never use enough kindness. And Dr. Stanford, the microphone is yours.
President Harden, President Pro Tem Stenziano, councilmember Elizabeth Brown, let me start by saying hello. And you will see the significance of my enthusiastic greeting this evening later on in my remarks. On behalf of our Board of Education and our incoming superintendent, Dr. Talisa Dixon, thank you from the bottom of our hearts for this opportunity to be recognized for the great work we are continuing to do all across Columbus City Schools. Today, nearly 60,000 students and staff returned to classes after a prolonged winter blast that forced the cancellation of classes for several days, and they were very sad about that. It was good to have students back in the classroom and continuing their learning pathways to success. Today, our Columbus City Schools celebrated the opening of schools, as councilmember Brown indicated, with the kickoff of our third annual Columbus City Schools Relationship Week. You're wondering what is Relationship Week? Well, we in Columbus City Schools understand that strong relationships are central to the learning process and allows for long-term relationships to be built. Prioritizing relationships is an important part of the work we do at Columbus City Schools. Strong relationships are the key to creating exceptional culture and climates in all of our schools. This week, we're encouraging students, staff, and community members to become aware of who they are and how they care for each other by participating in daily activities that reaffirm their compassion, their respect, and their trust for each other as part of the spirit of Columbus City Schools. Each day, we have a specific theme. This morning, as I indicated, we started this week off with hello. By offering a simple hello to everyone you see can be the start to making sure everyone feels noticed and valued as an individual. Tomorrow, our theme is "One Random Act of Kindness." And this is where we need the help of you all on city council and really everyone across the city of Columbus. We want every student and staff member, including our community and our district, to commit to performing one, at least one random act of kindness. Anything from a small compliment given to a stranger or by sharing a seat on the bus. That's 60,000 acts of kindness, and with the help of you all, it can be even larger to all across the city of Columbus. On Wednesday, our theme is forgiveness. Be brave and offer an apology to someone you may have done something wrong unintentionally. The Thursday is our "No One Eats Alone" Day. Lunch is the perfect time of the day to make sure that everyone feels valued and included and accepted. We are asking our students to use that time to check in on each other and to ask how the day is going. We want to make sure that no one is sitting alone at lunchtime. And you all remember what lunch can be like, right? And on Friday, our theme is "Safer Together." In Columbus City Schools, we look out for each other. We want our students to use this day to circle up and create a space where everyone's voice is being heard, because we know that we truly are safer together when we all work together to prioritize safety and act together to protect one another. This is the foundation of our work. By building a culture of inclusion and connectedness, our schools and communities can better support our students each and every day. And this is how we build positive, safe, and learning-inclusive environments and build relationships that are so critical to the learning process, the well-being of our students, and essentially, the success of all of our students. This is our spirit of success that we talk about every day, and I thank you again, councilmember Brown, for allowing us to spotlight our work in being a part of creating the success with our students and team members all across the city and across our district.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Stanford. We all have a few hours left of the day to start by greeting someone new or in a new language, so I challenge you to do that. And then tomorrow, Random Acts of Kindness Day. Let's generate as many as we can, following the leadership of the schools, to promote compassion and kindness. So, thanks again. That's all I have. Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Mitch Brown?
Thank you, President Harden. This evening, I would like to ask Chief Jacobs and her family to please approach the podium. This evening, I would like to present ordinance 0037X219 to recognize Police Chief Kimberly K. Jacobs in honor of her 39 years of distinguished service with the Columbus Division of Police. Whereas Kimberly K. Jacobs began her exemplary career with the Columbus Division of Police in 1979, she is the first woman in the history of the Columbus Division of Police to be promoted to commander, deputy chief, and police chief. And whereas during her tenure, Chief Jacobs has made training and community policing her primary areas of focus, she has led the charge by increasing the amount of diversity, bias-based, and de-escalation training for the Columbus Division of Police. She has acted as a catalyst for initiatives such as the division's civilian police academy, implementation of a separate domestic violence report, and complete reorganization of the internal affairs to investigate all complaints against citizens. Chief Jacobs represented the city of Columbus in 2010, when she hosted President Obama at the graduation ceremony of the Division of Police 114th recruit class. Later, she is recognized and spearheaded national police training efforts as part of President Obama's task force on the 21st century policing. And whereas Chief Jacobs has represented the Columbus Division of Police locally, as a board member for the Center for Family and Safety and Healing in the state of Ohio, serving on the Police Officer Training Commission, and nationally as a member of the Major City Chiefs Association, whereas Chief Jacobs holds herself to the highest standard of excellence by following the mission statement she created, Columbus Division of Police Officers are in service with the purpose to protect, with the passion to preserve, and with the utmost pride in our performance. Whereas Chief Jacobs has exemplified the core values of the Columbus Division of Police throughout her career, her dedication to the Columbus community and passion for public service has truly been a blessing to this city and its residents. Now and therefore, be it resolved by the Council of City of Columbus, that this council does hereby express its appreciation for the outstanding contributions that have been made by Police Chief Kimberly K. Jacobs during her 39 years of public service to the city of Columbus, and this council congratulates her on her retirement and move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, favor, Remi Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Any comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Remi?
Thank you very much, Chief. Our relationship began when I was a leader up in Northland, and over the years, we've had many opportunities to meet, talk, offer advice, look for solutions for our great city, and we've seen you out in the community more than I can remember. And certainly, I want to thank you. Thank you for your service. I think all of us that serve hope to leave what we enter into and what we take part in better off than what we found it, and you certainly have done that. And so I look forward to hearing some great cruise stories and a lot of fun in the future. But we are very, very much thankful for what you've accomplished and how you've left this department, and I'm happy for you, and so we certainly will miss you. Thank you.
Councilmember President Tyson?
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Chief Jacobs, I just want to say thank you for your service to this community. You know, it's not always easy being the first of anything. And being our first female chief of police is such a significant accomplishment. And certainly, knowing coming through the ranks, it has not always been easy, just knowing when you're the first of anything. But I truly believe that you have come through these ranks showing dignity, you've shown respect, you've shown professionalism, and I appreciate your service. See, your family's standing with you. I thank them for allowing you to be able to serve this community. And again, like I said, has it always been perfect? No, it hasn't, and no job is perfect. But you have certainly stood and made sure that the training has been different, the community policing is different, and I just thank you for your leadership. And certainly, again, you know, it's easy to criticize people when they're not in people's shoes, and I have found that until you walk in another person's shoes, it's really difficult to criticize their work. So I thank you for your leadership and your commitment to our city.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Elizabeth Brown?
Chief Jacobs, we are all honored to be here tonight honoring you. And one thing that you hear some of us talk about and other folks in the public service realm is that, you know, service is a sacrifice. I think there are few people who understand that more than you, except maybe the people standing around you. But what I appreciate especially is in every conversation I've ever had with you, not once do you dwell on the sacrifice. You dwell on the honor of serving, and that is a rare thing and a wonderful thing and an asset to our city. So I thank you for that. I thank you for always regarding your job and your service as a true honor, because it is an honor to serve this city. So thank you for your lifetime of barrier-breaking and service.
Thank you.
Council President?
Thank you, Chair. To Chief, I echo my colleagues' great appreciation, and what you have heard and just about everybody's statements is highlighting the historic nature of your career. But what I think is noteworthy about being the first is that after each one of your ascensions into those new roles, a young girl, a young person who was openly gay, transgender, lesbian, was able to say, "Now I can too." You did that for an entire community, and that was just the beginning. You did the work. You represented us. You sacrificed, and you served our community very well. On behalf of our nearly 900,000 residents, on behalf of this council certainly, we say thank you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Council President. Deputy Director, oh, Director Pettis. Yes, sir.
Thank you, President Harden, members of council. I represent Chief Jacobs' public safety family, and I'd just like to take a moment to thank Chief Jacobs for her service. We know that it could not have been easy for her to become a police officer when she did or to move up the chain of command. We know that she had to have experienced inequities. We can suspect that she probably had to be smarter and better just to be considered to be qualified. But Chief Jacobs took the high road. She rose above the fray and rose above everyone else. She chose to work from within the division to implement positive change, and positive change she has made in the division. And that's one of the things that I wanted to thank her for. The other thing that I wanted to thank her for is her conscientious leadership. For two and a half years, I've been the safety director, and I've watched her with her six deputy chiefs. She has conducted succession planning. She rotated them in different assignments. She's mentored them and rotated them as the acting police chief in her absence, on vacations, and all of the boards that you identified, so that her members, because she cares about her members, and the public that we serve, because she cares about our community, would have instantaneous leadership capable of stepping in on a moment's notice and run our great Division of Police 24/7, 365 days a year. That's a conscientious leadership, and Chief Jacobs has focused on continuous improvement, and that has helped to make the Columbus Division of Police one of the best police divisions in the country. So Chief Jacobs, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve with you, and I thank you for your 39-plus-year service.
Deputy Director Stewart?
Ditto what he said.
With that, the floor is yours, Chief.
Council President, councilmembers, I can't tell you how much I appreciate this resolution, this recognition, and the kind words. Certainly, it has been the biggest honor that I can imagine. I never would have anticipated 39 years ago that I would be standing here today as the chief of police. But I sincerely believe that we have done a lot of good. And councilmember, if you'll remember, seven years ago, sat down with an interview with you and then Mayor Coleman, and I gave you a four-page action plan. And I said, "If you promote me to chief, this is the things that I'll do in the first weeks, the first months, the first year, and during my term." And I've kept track of those things that all of the members of the Division of Police have accomplished during the last seven years. And that document, that four-page document, has been filled in with all of the things that I did write in there to prove to you and the mayor that I lived up to my word. And it is now a 36-page document. I keep notes. But that includes the hundreds of meetings that I had with community members, the hundreds of meetings that I had with law enforcement leaders throughout, as you said, the region and the state and on a national level, and the many meetings that I've had with our own personnel to keep them motivated and inspired to do the best work that they could possibly do for the citizens of Columbus. I'm going to give you a copy of that 36-page document to show you what all the Division of Police has been able to do in seven years with a plan, with goals, that mean something to our community members. They were written for them, not for us. They were written for them, because I believe all of those things that we've done, and believe me, there are a few things added into that list that weren't anticipated at that time, but nonetheless, I'd be glad to hand that to you and show you that we have made a big difference in this community in the last seven years. And if you remember again, during that meeting, when you did announce to me, and the mayor announced to me that I was going to be the chief of police, he gave me a charge. You said three things. Want to see leadership, innovation, and efficiency. I added in training. There's an eight-page summary of how the things that we've been doing have paid attention to the goals that were set out by then Mayor Coleman and have been lived up to for now Mayor Ginther and city council. You all deserve to have someone that works in the best interest of all of our community members, just as you do. And I believe that by the cooperation that we have with the Division of Police and all of the other city entities, I have a great relationship with all of our directors, and we work very closely together on many, many projects, and it's not just me. We're on a name-to-name basis with so many people in our community. So I'll just wrap up and say there's a few things that I believe we can say now, as was proposed seven years ago. Said I wanted to leave a legacy of progress, and the Division of Police will be better than ever using these indicators of success. The ethical behavior and respect for others exhibited by our personnel is rated highly in community surveys. Our command-level personnel are on a name-to-name basis with community leaders, and we have a collaborative working relationship with many of our city's administration, business, and community leaders. Our racial, cultural, and ethnic differences are celebrated rather than feared, as evidenced by our cooperative efforts with the community to prevent disturbances over perceived biases. We are striving to make our diversity reflect in greater numbers our community. Employee relations and morale are positive, and personnel have confidence in their supervisors. Our personnel have new career development and educational opportunities. They have better training, and they're more highly prepared for taking on new assignments. Our civilian staff allows us to put more officers in operational positions and provides us with support, information, and functionality, which multiplies our effectiveness and our efficiency. Our partnerships with community and social service agencies result in helping our citizens battle complex and recurring crime problems. Our technology helps us solve crimes and better document employee actions, and our cooperative efforts with the city's administration, including city council, results in reaching our goals in a cost-effective manner and with our budgetary confines. So thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to lead this wonderful group of women and men in the Division of Police and have the opportunity to meet thousands and thousands of our residents throughout the community. It has been the greatest pleasure, honor, and privilege to be able to do so. So thank you very much. Thank you all.
Chief, before you go, want you to introduce your family, please?
Oh, sorry. This is my mom. My mom was with me in the mid-1970s when a man walked up to me. We were at a Pizza Hut restaurant, my mom and dad and I, and he said, "Have you ever thought about a job in law enforcement?" Women weren't visibly in law enforcement in the mid-'70s, but my mom and my dad and I talked about it for an hour with this guy, and by the end of the conversation, I was ready to go to Ohio State and finish up my schooling in sociology and criminology, and my mom and dad were supportive of my career for the last 39 years. So anyhow, that's my mom. Doty Knight.
Can I interrupt just a little?
And... Please, come to the podium.
The highway patrolman is the one that came and asked to speak to her and asked for our permission, and he said, "If I have to have a woman," I noticed your daughter, and she has poise, she communicates with you, and so we tried to get her in, and she was too short, by an inch, and we actually tried to stretch her. And it didn't work. We put her in the station wagon to take her to Worcester to be measured again. It didn't work, so the police department got her.
And beside me is my wife, Bobby Beddinghouse, and my sister Peggy Franklin from Florida. So, thank you.
Chief, there's one more thing I'd like to do. President Harden, I would like to introduce ordinance 04132019 from the floor to authorize Columbus City Council to enter into a grant agreement with the Columbus Foundation in support of the Kimberly K. Jacobs Fund for Learning, Cultural Understanding, and Engagement to authorize the appropriation expenditure of $50,000 within the Public Safety Initiative sub-fund. For five years, Chief Jacobs implemented a training program unlike any other to help officers understand the root causes of today's fractured police-community relations. The three-day immersive program takes 55 officers on a journey to Flight 93 memorial site in Shanksville, Pennsylvania, and then on to Washington, DC. It includes educational tours of the United States Holocaust Memorial Museum and the National Museum of African-American History and Culture and Film in classroom study. This fund will continue the transformative training program she developed that empowers officers to become trusted stewards of the community. This is a testament to her commitment to service and excellence. We do not want this program to end with Chief Jacobs' retirement. Columbus City Council is partnering with AEP, Columbia Gas of Ohio, and L Brands to establish this fund. Council will appropriate $50,000 in the fund to be administered through the Columbus Foundation and the Columbus Police Foundation, and I would like to thank all of my council colleagues for the contributions. I move to wave second reading.
Second. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, favor, Remi Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Waved.
And I move for passage.
Second. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, favor, Remi Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Ladies and gentlemen, Chief Jacobs. President Harden, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown, for that fitting send-off.
Thank you.
Councilmember Remy.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. I'd like to invite Dr. Darrell Gray from the Ohio State University to the podium. Tonight, I'm pleased to introduce Resolution 0050X, 2019, to recognize today, Monday, February 4th, as World Cancer Day. This is the one singular and annual initiative under which the entire world unites to the fight against cancer globally. This initiative aims to save millions of preventable deaths by raising awareness and education about cancer while also pressing organizations and individuals across the world to take action. You need to look no further than the neighbor on your left and the neighbor on your right to find someone that has been personally affected or has a close friend or family member that has been affected by this horrific disease. Sitting next to me is Councilmember Mitch Brown, a cancer survivor himself. And tonight, I wear the infectious wearables tie as a reminder for early detection of breast cancer, something that hits home in my household. In 2003, my wife was diagnosed as having the BRCA1 gene. This means she had up to an 85% chance of developing breast cancer and up to a 60% chance of developing ovarian cancer. For the past 16 years, she has regularly been seen by a breast and ovarian oncologist in hopes of early detection of any cancer. But there is hope in preventing either of these horrible cancers for people that have a predisposition due to the BRCA gene. After our third child, she had an oophorectomy, and this past year, she had a double mastectomy to ensure that she could be there for our children and grow old with me. Of course, these are just a couple of examples. I'm sure that each of us can name many, many more. It's with this in mind, we recognize World Cancer Day. We continue to strive towards a cure and hope that somehow that happens in our lifetime. Being the second-leading cause of death, 9.6 million people lose their battle with cancer each year. At least one-third of common cancers can be prevented by reducing exposure to risk factors such as tobacco, obesity, physical inactivity, infections, alcohol, environmental pollution, occupational carcinogens, and radiation. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus to recognize Monday, February 4th, as World Cancer Day and encourage continued collaboration and support in the fight against cancer. Dr. Gray, the floor is yours.
Good evening to Councilmember Remy, the sponsor of this resolution, to Council President Shannon Harden, my more house brother and friend, and other members of the council and distinguished guests. It's my esteemed pleasure to be joining you this evening of World Cancer Day. On behalf of Dr. Raphael Pollak, Director of the Ohio State University Comprehensive Cancer Center, Dr. William Farrar, interim CEO of the James Cancer Hospital, and Dr. Elektra Paskett, Director of the Center for Cancer Health Equity at the Ohio State University Comprehensive Cancer Center, thank you for this opportunity. As a physician, community advocate, researcher, and more importantly, family man, one of the most difficult conversations I can have with someone is one in which I'm telling them or informing them of a diagnosis of cancer. Recognize that while the diagnosis of cancer is not a death sentence, its diagnosis, treatment, and survivorship can have significant life-altering implications for that person, their family, and the communities in which they reside. In Ohio, cancer is the second-leading cause of death, cancer death, accounting for nearly one in every four deaths. And among men and women in Ohio, lung, colorectal, breast, and pancreatic cancers are the leading causes of cancer death. The good news is that for most cancers, the cancer death rates have been declining and continue to do so. There have been tremendous advances in the prevention, screening, diagnosis, treatment, and survivorship that contribute to this, and the James Cancer Hospital, one of very few comprehensive cancer centers in the nation to hold the designation of exceptional from the National Cancer Institute, and its researchers, physicians, and staff are playing an integral role in leading the nation and world in these realms. More and more, we're able to share the news of another C-word with patients and their families, and that is cure. And if we are to continue to increase the number of victories in the fight against cancer, we must reach beyond the walls of our clinics, our hospitals, and our city halls. We must be boots on the ground in communities of those whom we serve, particularly those from our most vulnerable populations. We know that there's significant disparity in cancer outcomes between those of low socioeconomic status, those living in poverty, those with limited educational opportunities, those who are geographically isolated as compared to our more affluent counterparts. On World Cancer Day and every day, we need greater unity in ensuring that advances in prevention, diagnosis, treatment, and survivorship of cancer reach every community. That's what makes meaningful partnerships between the James Cancer Hospital and other community stakeholders such as Columbus City Council, Columbus Public Health, Franklin County Public Health, and the National African-American Male Wellness Initiative so valuable and important. This is why through our Center for Cancer Health Equity, we've invested in community health workers and patient navigators to complement our clinical research and community endeavors. These are team members who educate members of our diverse communities across Ohio and assist them with overcoming barriers to cancer prevention, screening, diagnosis, and treatment. We have community health workers that mirror the population that we serve, whether it be Somali community health workers, Nepali community health workers, African-American, Hispanic community health workers. It's been said and remains true that people don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. This is why we invest in building relationships. Relationships are key to increasing enrollment of minorities in clinical trials. They're key to the success of our mobile mammography vans in service to, in where we travel to communities, diverse communities, in need to provide breast cancer screenings. They're key to the success of our growing lung cancer screening program. They're key to our ability to provide low-to-no-cost screening colonoscopies to uninsured individuals. And they're key to our clinical and research efforts aimed at decreasing the number of new cases and deaths from HPV-related cancers, prostate cancer, pancreatic cancer, to name a few. In closing, I believe that one day we will be a cancer-free world. I believe that Columbus and the James Cancer Hospital are leaders in bringing this to fruition. Thank you for partnering with us on this journey, and I encourage you to encourage community members to visit our website, cancer-osu.edu, to learn more. Thank you again.
Thank you very much, Dr. Gray. Councilmember Brown.
Dr. Gray, again, for everyone present, and certainly for Council President Harden, and those of us on the council who knew this individual, Jason Jackson passed away this past Friday from cancer. A young police officer, very, very engaged in the community, very, very engaged in teaching other individuals, young people, about the importance of relationships with our law enforcement community and public safety. And on acknowledging it is very, very significant. As someone who fought, and I'm fortunate enough to be here today to talk about the issue about cancer, but Jason wasn't quite so fortunate. So with that, Council President, if I may, could we have a moment of silence on behalf of Jason Jackson, who passed away this past Friday from cancer? Thank you, and the battle continues.
Thank you. Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, Councilmember Remy. To Dr. Gray, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for your leadership, especially in making sure that we are treating people, educating people from diverse backgrounds, to not let their income, their race, and ethnicity not permit them to get the services and the education that is needed. You spoke about the health disparities, and they are just, they're real, and they're real in this community. And it really does take a village, all of us working together, to make sure people have the education, have access to care, so that they can then either not have, hopefully not get certain diseases when they can, based upon being educated about certain things, but for others that have, that do end up getting an illness, that we have the services and working, that they can have access to the services they need to move forward. I just thank you for your leadership. You're doing amazing work at the Ohio State University, and not only here, but you're certainly all over the country, making sure that Ohio State is known, but just making sure that all communities are making sure their individuals have access to care and treatment. I thank you for your leadership.
Thank you very much.
All right. If there are no other comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Favor, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Remy. Councilmember Favor.
Thank you, President Harden. I would like to invite Ms. Nana Watson, the president of the Columbus Chapter of the NAACP, to the podium. And as she's moving forward, I would like to introduce Resolution 0048X-2019 to recognize February as Black History Month in the City of Columbus and to celebrate the civil rights contributions of the NAACP and the strides it has made to protect the political, educational, social, and economic rights of all. Whereas Black History Month, which originally started as Negro History Week, is celebrated during the month of February and dates back to 1926, when Dr. Carter G. Woodson set aside a special period to recognize the heritage and achievements of African-Americans. And whereas the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, the NAACP, was founded on February 12, 1909, and is universally recognized as the nation's oldest, largest grassroots-based civil rights organization with more than a half million members and supporters around the world. And whereas the NAACP was formed in response to the horrific lynching that took place during the early 1900s, particularly the month-long race riot which took place in the capital and resting place of President Abraham Lincoln in Springfield, Illinois. During this rampage in 1908, black and Jewish businesses and properties were burned, and black citizens were beaten, lynched, and forced out of their homes into hiding. And whereas the Great Depression of the 1930s influenced the NAACP to begin to focus on economic justice, and the Civil Rights Era was a key time for the NAACP legal defense team. They spearheaded the passage of the Civil Rights Act of 1957, 1964, and 1968, along with the Voting Rights Act of 1965. They also won key desegregation cases, including the landmark Brown versus Board of Education case of 1954, and with the all-deliberate-speed desegregation Brown Order of 1955. In Columbus, the local NAACP's advocacy on this issue continued for more than 20 years. The order to desegregate Columbus City Schools was not issued until March 8, 1977. However, the district continued to oppose this until the U.S. Supreme Court upheld Judge Robert Duncan's federal court order in April of 1979. And whereas the NAACP, along with other prominent civil rights advocates such as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Rosa Parks, Frederick Douglass, Dr. W.E.B. Du Bois, Dorothy Height, Ralph Ellison, James Baldwin, Alex Haley, Thurgood Marshall, Jackie Robinson, Sojourner Truth, Harriet Tubman, Fannie Lou Hamer, and countless others have continued to fight against the cancer of injustice, paving the way for future generations. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus that this council does hereby recognize the important contributions of the NAACP and applaud its role in the civil rights struggle in America and does hereby declare the month of February 2019 as Black History Month in the City of Columbus. Are there any comments that you would like to make, Ms. Watson?
Well, of course, I always have comments. And thank you, Councilwoman Favor, for the resolution. And I bring you greetings from the oldest and the boldest civil rights organization in America. Council President Harden and members of council, we will continue to be the voice of the voiceless who have faced social injustices. We're looking forward to working with each of you to address the issues that affect the black community. We want to ensure that blacks have the opportunity to participate in the economic fabric of our community by securing construction contracts, working to make sure all communities are safe and have decent housing. We want parity for black people as we move forward, and we're so excited about this opportunity to engage all of you one more time. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Don't go nowhere.
Oh, don't go nowhere?
Are there any comments from my colleagues?
Yes.
President Watson, I just want to thank you for your leadership. The points that you just made are so important. Think about Black History Month, and certainly Councilwoman Favor has certainly shared a lot of individuals who have certainly been very important to the movement of people of color moving forward. But we're in a war still.
Yes.
The battle is definitely not over. And I think that we have to continue to work with organizations like yourself, work with other organizations that are also fighting for equality for people. We have a diverse city, and we want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to move forward. But it's most important to think about black history. And when you think about our history, you think about when slaves were free, and Martin Luther King speaks to this point, they were free, but they didn't have anything. So it's pretty amazing history that individuals who got nothing when they were free. And when you have nothing, it's pretty difficult to move forward and have equity. It just doesn't, the numbers just don't add up. And so we didn't have any land to farm, if you've only been farming, it's very difficult. So the history, our history, is so important because for us to have even four, three members of color sitting up here, other people stood before, we stand on their shoulders. Because I have four of us, I'm sorry, Council President, I didn't look this way. But I've been four of us here, but it's been four of us here. But I say that to say that, you know, this history is one that it is America's history. And so it is important for people to understand people's history. And for this month, it certainly is, we need more than a month, but again, this month is Black History Month, and we really do need to take the time to understand this history so that as we understand other people's history, we all had to work together to move forward, and we still need to focus on equity and equality for people of color. So I thank you for your leadership, and especially around the area of business and economic development. Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilmember Favor.
And thank you, Councilwoman Tyson, for your remarks. May I leave now?
If there are no other, oh, excuse me, if there are no other comments, I'd move for adoption of the resolution.
Brown, Brown, Favor, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.[1685.61][1685.61](applause)
That is all for me.
Thank you, President Harden. This evening, I would like to announce that as Chair of Public Utilities Committee, we will be holding a hearing this Wednesday, February 6, 2019, at 5:30 here in council chambers. The purpose of the hearing is to present and gather feedback on amending Title 11 of the Water, Sewer, and Electricity Code to add definitions of rate classes, to clarify service charges during water shut-offs, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to replace water meters, and to enact new sections relating to charges during termination. This hearing will not address water and sewer rates paid by residents and businesses, which, as you all know, are recommended on an annual basis by the Sewer and Water Advisory Board. The code change and proposal, ordinance 0329-2019, does appear in Rules and Reference Committee on First Reading on tonight's agenda. Thank you, President Harden. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you, President Protim. Councilmember Tyson.
Yes, President Harden, I have one resolution, and I'm going to ask Cheryl Klinger, Caitlin Tully, and Julie Griffith to walk towards the podium, please. And they're representing the Center for Family Safety and Healing. And I have resolution number 0049X-2019 to declare February of 2019 as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month in the City of Columbus, and to thank the Center for Family Safety and Healing and other organizations for their services supporting the victims of dating violence. Whereas each year, approximately 1.5 million high school students experience physical abuse from a dating partner. More... over three in four parents have never talked to their children about domestic violence. One in three young people in the United States are affected by dating violence. One point five have been, one out of five have been slapped, pushed, hit, threatened, or coerced by a partner. As a result, February has been designated as a month for advocates to join together in efforts to raise awareness regarding dating violence, highlighting promising practices, and encouraging communities to become more involved. Whereas abuse occurs in all types of relationships among people of all backgrounds, age, race, religion, financial status, sexual orientation, and education. Teen dating abuse is any act that causes harm or threatens the risk of harm to a teen by an individual who is a current or former dating relationship with that teen, and may be physical, sexual, financial, verbal, or emotional in nature, and includes behavior that threatens, intimidates, harasses, controls, isolates, or monitors another person. And while abuse often occurs as a pattern of controlling behavior, a single episode of abuse is a cause for concern. Whereas the Center for Family Safety and Healing was founded in 2011, at 2011, as a merger between the Columbus Coalition Against Family Violence, founded in 1998, and the Center for Child and Family Advocacy at Nationwide Children's Hospital, which was founded in 2002. And whereas this organization is committed to addressing family violence, its integrated multidisciplinary team approach has created an organization that's powerful enough to help break the cycle of family violence. Its success is a result of a collaboration with partners including the Lutheran Social Services Choices for Victims of Domestic Violence, the Columbus Division of Police, Special Victims Bureau, the Franklin County Children's Services, the Franklin County Prosecutor's Office, Big Lots Behavioral Health Services, at Nationwide Children's Hospital, and others. And I'm going to let you share all your programs. But Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month provides an opportunity for residents to learn about preventing dating violence and show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy services and assistance to victims. So be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus. This council is hereby declared February of 2019 as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. I move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Favor, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. So Cheryl, can you please make any comments based on the resolution, but also share the different training and programs that you have? Thank you.
Absolutely. It's an honor to be here this evening with our president and council members. And thank you, Councilwoman Tyson, for supporting this resolution for us. The work at the Center for Family Safety and Healing is really important. We're a one-stop location where families can get resources. We work with families that have child abuse and neglect, teen dating violence, domestic violence, as well as elder abuse. I'm really honored to be here with my team, who does a lot of our work in the communities with our teens. We know that the teen population is a unique one, and it impacts each of us as a grandparent, as an aunt, as a mom, or a dad, uncle, niece, or nephew. It impacts us. And the more that we can prevent teen abuse in our community, the more successful we are creating that healthy culture. I'm going to let Julie share just a few moments about our training.
Thank you, Cheryl. Yeah, so my colleague Chelsea and I do a lot of work educating students in middle schools and high schools around Columbus and the greater central Ohio area. That education is really focused around what we call the relationship spectrum. So acknowledging that no relationship is perfect, of course, although we might wish that it was. But we know that, we work with teens to understand that there are healthy behaviors in relationships. Let's examine those. Let's set a healthy vision for what our relationships could look like in the future. Or, you know, what boundaries do I want for my own health and identity? And really, having those conversations with students, usually in a health class setting. And then we also look at, what are some of those unhealthy behaviors that are actually pretty normalized in our communities, in our cultures, that when you really take a look at them, are based in power and control, and kind of set us up to have those unhealthy or even abusive relationships later on down the road. And then we really talk a lot about recognizing abuse in relationships, how it might look a little bit different because you're a teenager, but also, it's got a lot in common with domestic violence. So we really work with teens to understand what this can look like and feel like. We think maybe abuse is just physical violence. So we spend a lot of time looking at, what does control look like? What does a controlling relationship look like before it ever gets to physical violence? So really breaking down some of those norms that we might have, or expectations we have. So that's really, I think, powerful work. We are really seeing some hope in breaking the cycle of family violence. I think Chelsea and I both have a lot of stories of students who come up to us afterward and say, "I didn't realize that my behavior was controlling. I didn't know that what I was doing was impacting my boyfriend or girlfriend in that way." And there, we're seeing those light bulbs happening, and we really do see that there's hope here in breaking the cycle of violence. One charge that I would like to make for everyone is, if you have a teen in your life, take some time to familiarize ourselves with what those signs look like of teen dating violence. What are those signs of abuse? And then be brave and jump in and have that courageous conversation with your teen. For so long, teen dating abuse was kind of swept under the rug as, you know, puppy love. This is just kind of young puppy love. Teens are obsessive and infatuated with each other, but we know it goes deeper than that. So be courageous, have that open conversation with your teen, and really familiarize yourself with the signs of abuse. You can find some of that information at familiesafetyandhealing.org. We provide a lot of good info about just that, recognizing the signs and how to respond if your teen does say, you know, "I think this is happening to me," or "I think this is happening to a friend." So just getting comfortable being a little uncomfortable in those conversations. And it really does take all of us to help break the cycle of family violence in our community. So thank you all for your commitment to this, and to the teens in our community, and to our community as a whole. So thank you.
So thank you, Cheryl, and Chelsea, and Julie. And I know some of the programs that you have are Dating in a Digital World, How We Feel, How We Deal, Misrepresentation, The Relationship Spectrum, Sound Relationships, and The Mask You Live In. And so, for those families who may be having the opportunity to see the presentation that you just shared with us today, that certainly, go and look at those signs of teen dating violence awareness so that your children are not going down a path that is unhealthy for them. So I thank you for your leadership, and thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Really appreciate you.
Thank you again. Thank you.
I do have an announcement, but first I want to mention that since this is Black History Month, that there are events being held at the Columbus Metropolitan Library. And you can call them at 614-645-2275, or www.columbuslibrary.org. And these programs are free. And also, the King Arts Complex on February 16, from 10 to 4, is highlighting a free program for Black History Month focusing on Amina Robinson. But also, in our council chambers, on February 15, at 11 o'clock, the City Council will hold its first inaugural Black History Month program. Reverend Dr. Charles E. Booth, Senior Pastor of Mount Olivet Baptist Church, will serve as the keynote speaker. We will also recognize the achievements of Queen Brooks in the art, in the area of arts and entertainment. Louis Smoot, for his leadership in business. Pastor Leon Troy, as a faith leader. James Preston Poindexter, who was the first African-American council member in the City of Columbus, will recognize his foundation for his advocacy in public service. And Catherine Willis, in the area of education. And again, this event will be held in council chambers, February 15. Doors open at 10:30, and the program will begin at 11. And I just want to thank Council President Harden and all of our council members for us, for us being able to host our very first inaugural Black History Month program. And hope to see everyone in viewing and listening audience in council chambers. Thank you. Council President Harden.
Thank you, Councilmember, and thank you for your leadership on that effort for the very first Black History celebration here in council chambers. Really important that everyone is celebrated in this, the people's chamber. So, thank you. I also just wanted to make note and recognize the passing of Mr. Clarence Lumpkin, most well-known by the moniker of the mayor of Linden, someone who served our community, specifically advocated for the people, the families in Linden. And because of his advocacy for Linden, made that community better, but also made the rest of Columbus better as well. And so, we will be joining with the rest of the community as we mourn his passing this week. And please, please keep their family in their prayers. Are there any comments by our elected officials or members of the administration? I saw Ms. Peg is here, from South Linden. Are there any requests by council for the removal of ordinance or resolutions from consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive the reading of titles of 30-day legislation by the clerk? Please call a roll.
Brown, Brown, Favor, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read to the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda?
Finance Committee Ordinance 267-2019, Public Utilities Committee 3384-2018, and Ordinance is 149, 194, 209, 212, 253, 256, 295-2019. Rules and Reference Committee Ordinance 329-2019, Zoning Committee Ordinance is 315, 316, 320, 321, 344, 14, and 42. I'm sorry, that's 41 and 42. -2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We do have one speaker on the first, first reading portion of the agenda. That is Ms. Kelly Arnold, speaking against Ordinance 315 and 316. Is Ms. Arnold here? And I think that that is a first reading for a ordinance in zoning. Honored, welcome to council.
Thank you, Council President Harden and council members. I'm here to speak in opposition of the two proposed council variance requests at Walcut Road and Roberts Road. The developer's proposal to construct 124 multifamily units on these particular parcels is inconsistent with the Trabu-Roberts area plan. Planning recommends neighborhood commercial, specifically smaller neighborhood-scale commercial uses, in order to fully realize the potential for this area. As a resident on the far west side of the city, I have seen the limited commercial land opportunities we have being swallowed up by apartments through the use of extended stay hotels. As a result of this unchecked residential growth, further economic pressure is placed upon residents through their property taxes. Students of this area are served by the Hilliard City Schools, which already has the highest effective property tax rate in Franklin County due to unbalanced residential versus commercial growth. To add more high-density residential growth and accompanying school-aged children, without a balance of commercial and retail is unsustainable and must be addressed. This is especially true when the area planning does not recommend it. Also, the site in question would border both heavily trafficked Walcut and Roberts roads. Less than a mile down the road, a new warehouse is being constructed. This warehouse facility will include 80 new trucking bays. All of these trucks will be utilizing Walcut to either access I-270 via Roberts Road, or I-70 to the south. This is already a dangerous intersection in which traffic volume has not been addressed. Additional families and children living in proximity to this intersection are not in anyone's best interest. Additionally, the site is not connected to local parks or schools. It is a warehouse industrial commercial area. Children will have limited opportunities to play as no play space is incorporated into this design. And as city staff have noted, there is insufficient space for refuse collection to safely do their job, much less adequate area for school bus traffic. Given the multiple negative staff reports for these proposals, I am surprised that this has advanced to council's agenda. I urge you to decline these two variances, as this site is more appropriately addressed through a proper rezoning process. Should these variances move forward, there are future implications should this developer not move ahead with this project for any reason, and thus leave this area open to future development without any input from residents or city staff. As the City of Columbus grows, we should ensure that we are promoting healthy, sustainable growth that benefits all of our residents, living here now and in the future. The proposed projects requesting this variance do not accomplish that vision. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Just wanted to make sure that the zoning chair's staff have your contact information. I'm sure you'll be working with them. Councilmember Chair Tyson works very closely with folks on these matters coming for zoning. So look forward to the follow-up. Thank you. May I have a, the following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read those ordinance into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 51X-45X-2019, Finance Committee, Ordinance is 70, 184, 185, 186, 205, 207, 215, 251, 252, 255, 260, 261, 271, and 310-2019. Public Safety Committee, Ordinance is 273, 276, 279-2019. Public Service and Transportation Committee, Ordinance is 147, 150, and 345-2019. Administration Committee, Ordinance 132-2019. Economic Development and Small Business Committee, Resolution 46X-2019, and 47X-2019, Ordinance is 429, 430, 432, and 433-2019. Housing Committee, Ordinance 280-2019. Public Utilities Committee, Ordinance 3427-2018, Resolution 14X-2019, Ordinance is 48, 99, 128, 133, 139, 152, 171, 176, 182, 183, 188, 191, 228, and 248-2019. And one appointment from the mayor's office,
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Seeing no speakers on the consent action portion of the agenda, may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent action? Please call the roll by voice.
Ms. Brown?
Mr. Brown?
Ms. Favor?
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Stenziano?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson? President Harden?
Yes, with the exception of 0171-2019, on which I am abstaining. Ordinance is passed. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day tabled and emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Brown is chair. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. This morning, City Council announced amendments totaling $3.3 million to the 2019 operating budget. So now, I will be amending the budget and tabling for one week for us to consider next week final passage. Ordinance 2870-2018 to make appropriations for the 12 months ending December 31, 2019, for each of the several object classes for which the City of Columbus has to provide from the monies known to be in the treasury of said City of Columbus, in the fund known as the General Fund, during the said 12 months from the collection of all taxes, and from other sources of revenue, the amount of $912 million, and to declare an emergency. I first move to remove from the table.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Favor, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Remove from the table.
I move to amend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Favor, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Amend.
I move to table for one week.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Favor, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Tabled.
A next Ordinance 2871-2018 to make appropriations and transfers for the 12 months ending December 31, 2019, for other funds for various divisions, to authorize the city auditor to make transfers as may be necessary, and to declare an emergency. I first move to remove from the table.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Favor, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Removed.
I next move to amend, as submitted to the clerk.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Favor, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
And I move to table for one week to February 11.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Favor, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Tabled to February 11.
Thank you again to President Harden for your leadership, and all of my colleagues for your work and partnership reviewing. for your work and partnership reviewing and amending the 2019 operating budget. Last week, we passed a series of resolutions declaring the necessity of placing the city's voted bond package proposal on the ballot for May 7th, the election on May 7th. Thank you again to Auditor Kilgore for covering the process and benefits of utilizing voted bond funds, and to Director Lombardi for reviewing the four meetings held by the administration to share this package with residents and solicit feedback. These next five resolutions are the next step in the process of putting the voted bond package on the ballot for the May 7th election. Resolution 0020X-2019, to determine, to proceed with the issue of bonds and certifying same to the Board of Elections in the amount of $205 million for health, safety, and infrastructure. I move for adoption.
Second.
Please call a roll. You had to wave second reading, I'm sorry.
I request to wave second reading, move to wave second reading.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
And I move for adoption.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Next, Resolution 0021X-2019, to determine to proceed with the issue of bonds and certifying same to the Board of Elections in the amount of $100 million for recreation and parks. I move to wave second reading.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
I move for passage.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Resolution 002X, 0022X-2019, to determine to proceed with the issue of bonds and certifying same to the Board of Elections in the amount of $425 million for public service. I move to wave second reading.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
I move for passage.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Resolution 0023X-2019, to determine to proceed with the issue of bonds and certifying same to the Board of Elections in the amount of $250 million for water, power, sanitary sewers, and storm sewers. I move to wave second reading.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
I move for passage.
Please call a roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Resolution 0024X-2019, to determine to proceed with the issue of bonds and certifying same to the Board of Elections in the amount of $50 million for neighborhood development. I move to wave second reading.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
I move for passage.
Please call a roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, in Finance, Ordinance 0259-2019, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to establish various purchase orders for automotive parts for the Fleet Management Division per terms and conditions of various previously established universal term contracts to authorize the expenditure of $3.5 million from the Fleet Management Operating Fund and to declare an emergency. The city of Columbus operates a fleet of about 6,000 vehicles. The Fleet Management Division processes around 40,000 work orders each year, requiring the purchase of equipment from more than 400 vendors for ongoing maintenance. This year, $4.5 million is budgeted for the purchase of vehicle parts. This ordinance allocates a portion of those funds, and emergency action is being considered so that the maintenance of those vehicles won't, won't be interrupted. Any questions? I move for passage.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, Ordinance 0263-2019, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreement, and to establish related purchase orders for vehicle fuel and fueling services with Wex Bank for the Fleet Management Division to authorize the expenditure of $2 million from the Fleet Management Operating Fund and to declare an emergency. Last year, Fleet Management budgeted $10 million and spent 7.5 for bulk unleaded ethanol, diesel, and biodiesel fuels to keep the city's fleet running. This year, $9.8 million is budgeted, of which $2 million is being authorized through this ordinance. Additional authorizations will be made as necessary throughout the year. Emergency action is being considered to ensure an uninterrupted supply of fuel for our vehicles. I move for passage.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Ordinance 0270-2019, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreement, and to establish related purchase orders for bulk unleaded fuel with Lykan's Oil Company, and ethanol, diesel, and biodiesel fuels with Benchmark Biodiesel Incorporated for the Fleet Management Division, to authorize the expenditure of $2.5 million from the Fleet Management Operating Fund and to declare an emergency. The previous ordinance covered purchases of fuel for individual vehicles through the services of Wex Bank. This ordinance authorizes an additional $2.5 million to purchase bulk fuel to fill tanks that Fleet Management uses exclusively for city vehicles, bringing the total to $4.5 million for the budgeted $9.8 million for fuel purchases this year. Similar to the previous ordinance, additional authorizations will be made throughout the year as necessary. Today, emergency action is being considered to ensure an uninterrupted supply of fuel. Any questions? I move for passage.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
That's all I have, President Harden.
Thank you. The next committee to come before council is the Public Safety Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Brown. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight, I have ordinance 0274-219, to authorize Director of Public Safety on behalf of the Division of Police to modify the current contract with ProTow Inc., and increase funds for the continuation of towing management services to authorize an expenditure of $2.5 million from the Division of Police General Fund budget and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Please call a roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
That's all I have in public safety.
The committee, thank you, Chair. The next committee to come before council is Public Service and Transportation. Councilmember Remy chairs. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, President Harden. Tonight, I have ordinance number 0030-2019, to amend the 2018 capital improvement budget to authorize the transfer of funds within the Storm Sewer Bonds Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Shelly &amp; Sands Inc. for the Short North CID High Street Improvements Phase III and NCR Windland Park Seventh to Ninth Projects, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,163,053.80 from the Storm Sewer Bonds Fund for the Short North CID High Street Improvements Phase III and NCR Windland Park Seventh to Ninth Projects, to authorize the expenditures of up to $11,405,689.90 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund for the Short North CID High Streets Improvement Phase III and NCR Windland Park Seventh to Ninth Projects, and to declare an emergency. This contract includes replacement of the sidewalk and curb on both sides of North High Street between West Star Avenue and East Ninth Avenue. Landscaping planar beds and street trees will be installed. North High Street will be planed and overlaid. Mast armed traffic signal facilities will be installed, and other traffic control improvements will be implemented. Street and pedestrian light fixtures will be replaced within the project limits. Storm sewer systems will be installed, and all overhead utilities along North High Street within the project limits will be relocated underground. If there are no comments or questions from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all I have in Public Service and Transportation. With your permission, I'll move into administration.
Please.
Thank you very much. Tonight in administration, I have ordinance number 0131-2019, to authorize the Director of Department of Human Resources to enter into contract with the law firm of Baker &amp; Hostetler, L.L.P., for the purpose of providing assistance with collective bargaining negotiations and related activities, to authorize the expenditure of $200,000 from the Employee Benefits Fund, to waive the competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Codes, and to declare an emergency. Tonight, I have Tina DeFlutner, the Employee Resource Manager. I'll throw it over to her to talk a little bit about the fact that we're waiving competitive bidding on this project.
Good evening, President Harden, Chairman Remy, and members of council. It is in the best interest of the city to waive competitive bidding, as contracting with Baker Hostetler provides consistency from one set of negotiations to the next. Their history and background in researching contract issues that may arise during the term of the agreement is invaluable. Baker Hostetler continues to assist with the representation in contract negotiation and potential arbitration. The firm provides continuity experience with the city of Columbus' collective bargaining agreements. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. DeFlutner. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
And that's all I have in administration this evening.
Thank you, Chair Remy. The next committee to come before council is actually Public Utilities, but I'm going to, if it's all right, go to Rules and Reference, in which Councilmember Stenziano, President Protem Stenziano, will read resolutions and then go into his regular committees before we break for zoning. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. I appreciate the flexibility. As I bring forward an ordinance 0278-2019, to enact new Section 3111.22 of the Columbus City Code in order to create the Far West Area Commission and to declare an emergency. Because we have representatives from the far west neighborhood, really appreciate your flexibility so we can get them in and out as quickly as possible. As everyone's aware, this ordinance is response to a petition filed on November 19, 2018, by the Far West Area Commission Task Force, to create the Far West Area Commission in accordance with Chapter 3109 of the Columbus City Code, and with the proposed bylaws filed as part of said petition. We have members of the task force. If you all would like to come up, as we continue to recognize the ordinance, passage of this legislation will initiate notice procedures by the Department of Neighborhoods regarding various applications involving real property within the proposed area, necessitate additional routine staff work for the Department of Neighborhoods, and require annual funding in the amount to be appropriated by council. The Far West Area Commission will contain approximately 11.65 square miles, 15,605 housing units, and located bounded and described by Alton Darby Creek Road to the north, the Norfolk Southern Railroad Track to the south, west of the Buckeye Rail Yard, and east Old Robert Road. We do have two speakers tonight. Now, the first speaker I have is Sharon Rustatter.
Rustatter, yes.
Sharon, the mic is yours.
Thank you. Council President Harden, President Protem Stenziano, councilmembers Brown, Brown, favor, Remy, and Tyson, thank you for sponsoring and approving ordinance, presumably approving, ordinance 0278-2019, enacting Section 311.22 of the Columbus City Code in order to create the Far West Side Area Commission. While the far west side is relatively new to the city's fold, our core group's membership boasts a collective 200-plus years living in this area of town. Many residents have moved from a starter home or condo to a second home, or downsized from their family home to something smaller as they approach their retirement within that area. So people stay. People go, and they stay. In addition, many retirees moved to the area to be closer to family that already lived there, and others have grown up in the area and have returned as adults. We've all chosen this area to be our home. The past two years have seemingly gone by quickly. As we've learned more about the process to establish an area commission, we've met more residents in our area, heard their stories, suggestions, concerns, met with our elected officials, and with city officials and staff. We have much more to learn about the city, its processes in our area, and the people who comprise it. We appreciate your granting us this opportunity to represent far west side residents, and look forward to working with you to promote the health, safety, and well-being of residents via recreation and parks, transportation, safety services, commercial development, and responsible residential growth. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from my colleagues? The next speaker we have is Debbie Hampton.
I'm honored to be here before council. I second all that Sharon had to say, and I also wanted to take a moment to say thank you from the Cross Creek Village Civic Association for the opportunity to engage at the next level with an official area commission. Residents from the far west side have written to you and stood before you here in past years without a formal area commission. You recommended and encouraged its formation, and tonight, we see its official beginning, we hope. Residents appreciate your open accessibility and your patience with us through this ever-changing process. We are grateful for your support in moving this legislation forward, and acknowledge all of you as sponsors in favor of it, with special thanks to President Protem Stenziano. It is our hope that far, that far west side area residents will continue to communicate through the area commission process, as we all strive to find a balance between growth and a commitment to healthy, sustainable, balanced, environmentally protected, appropriate, thriving communities, places where we love to live, as we all work toward positive implementation of city code and best practices within our city of Columbus. Thank you again. We look forward to the journey.
Thank you, Debbie. Any questions or comments for Debbie? Seeing none, any questions or comments from my colleagues? Council President Harden?
Thank you, Chair Stenziano. Just want to congratulate you guys on the work. As former Chair of Neighborhoods, I was able to chair a process of bringing in the last area commission, and what I learned from that process is how much work goes into, into this process. It's not a quick process. You guys have spent more than a year out working, getting the appropriate buy-in and signatures, and all of those things that go into the process, and we're grateful. Area commissions are critical to how we govern ourselves in Columbus, and you now extending the coverage of, of area commissions to the far west side is something that's going to be good for our residents and will help us serve them that much better. So we look forward to being a partner with you and with the new commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for your leadership.
Thank you, President Harden. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Just want to, again, thank you all for your leadership and stepping up in this role. I remember, I don't know when our first meeting was, Debbie, but I believe it was a snowy day, and you really expressed a lot of frustration about feeling that there was a lot of change going on, that there was a lot of zoning, a lot of growth, and how can our neighborhood, our associations, have a bigger voice in that process at the city? This council is very excited for the opportunity to work with you in this new role. We're always excited to work with you in the past, and look forward to seeing your all's growth in leadership as an area commission. Without any further questions from my colleagues, I'll move for passage.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Congratulations. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to ask for a motion to recess so that we can go to zoning. Please call a roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Regular meeting number five is now recessed. We will commence zoning momentarily. Regular meeting number six will now come to order. Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal? Please call a roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. We will now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs this committee. All members serve on it. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Before beginning the zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pertaining to speaking before council on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents and three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the city attorney's office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against any council variance, including staff, please raise, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth, and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
Thank you. All right. So, the first ordinance is 0257-2019, to rezone 775 West Broad Street, being .2 acres located at the southeast corner of West Broad Street and South Davis Avenue, from AR1 Apartment Residential District and C4 Commercial District to C3 Commercial District. Proposed applicant, the applicant is Katie Robinson. The proposed use is a neighborhood-scale commercial, commercial uses. The City Department's recommendation is approval. The Franklin Air Commission recommendation is approval, 11, 0, and 3. However, this ordinance will be tabled indefinitely until the right-of-way dedication is complete. So I move to table this indefinitely.
Second.
Brown, Brown, favor. Brown, Brown, Favor, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 0258-2019 to grant a variance from the provisions of sections 33, 32.039, R4 residential district, 33, 12.49C, minimum numbers of parking spaces required, 33, 32.05B1 vision clearance, 33, 32.05A4 area district lot with requirements, 33, 32.15 R4 area district requirements, 33, 32.18D basis of computing area, 33, 32.21 building lines, 33, 32.25 maximum side yard required, 33, 32.26 minimum side yard permitted, and 33, 32.27 rear yard. Of the Columbus City Codes, for the property located at 752 Forest Street to permit an office with reduced development standards in a R4 residential district. The applicant is Crass LLC, care of David Hodge and Eric Zartman. Proposed use is office development. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Columbus South Side Air Commission's recommendation is approval 12-0. I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Favor, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Excuse me.
Sure.
Okay. The next ordinance is 0275-2019 to grant a variance from the provisions of the sections 33, 62.01M manufacturing districts, 33, 09.14 height districts, 33, 12.21D landscaping and 33, 12.49 minimum number of parking spaces required of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 27 West Jenkins Avenue to permit the multi-unit residential development with reduced development standards in the M manufacturing district. So I just was told that there is a speaker for this, for this particular, um, this variance. So the applicant is Woda Company, Woda Cooper Companies, in care of Dave Perry. The proposed use is multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Columbus South Side Air Commission recommendation is approval. So now I'm going to ask the staff to give us, since we have a speaker, a staff presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. The site is developed with a commercial building and is comprised of three parcels zoned in the M manufacturing district. The requested variance would permit redevelopment of the site with a 60-unit apartment building. A council variance is necessary because the M district does not permit multi-unit residential development. The request also includes variances to building height, landscaping and screening, and minimum number of required parking spaces. The south side plan recommends mixed-use land uses for this location with residential densities of between 16 to 28 units per the acre. The proposed development is 23.7 units per acre and is therefore consistent with the plan's land use recommendation. Additionally, the plan includes adoption of the Columbus Citywide Planning Policies. The Planning Division concludes that the development will be consistent with the design guidelines in the Columbus Citywide Planning Policies. Staff believes that multi-unit residential development of this density should be rezoned to an appropriate apartment residential zoning district and afforded the full review process applicable to rezoning applications, including a public hearing and review by the Development Commission. For that reason, this ordinance is conditioned on a follow-up rezoning to an appropriate zoning designation within one year of its effective date. Staff's recommendation is for approval. I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pine. Are there any questions?
No. Seeing none, then I'm going to ask for a presentation or statement from the applicant.
Could you please state your name, who you represent?
Joseph McCabe, represent Woda Cooper Companies in this endeavor. Thank you. Members of council, here before you this evening is a request for council variances appropriate to design and construct workforce housing, crucial affordable workforce housing that is in close proximity to a lot of things that families need right now, and that right now there is a shortage of or significant demand in our current Columbus environment to get the housing they really need, in a place where they can get to downtown, they can get to jobs, they can get on a bus within just a, like about 150 feet from this site in both directions. It's a great opportunity for us to reposition this property in a very unique partnership where Woda Cooper Companies is strategically partnered with Community Development for All People and John Edgar. You know the track record of both of these organizations and our work across the city in a number of significant areas already, and this is that natural next step. The project itself is 60 units, ranging in 30% up to 80% AMIs, and that's addressing households that often make as little as $16,000 a year, up to $61,000 a year. It provides crucial housing for those that we really want to see successful in our, our community here, those that are getting priced out of a lot of other neighborhoods. It was really great to work with over the last three months with both the South Side Area Commission, who unanimously recommended approval of this project, as well as the Marion Civic Association, who also, its 13 members unanimously recommended approval of this project, and to work hand-in-hand with both the community leaders, those here in the City of Columbus, the staff, to really think about what the next steps are as a, as a city, as a whole, and ways to provide housing for those who are at a disadvantage and can't really pay the large luxurious market rate rents we see popping up all around town.
Thank you, Mr. McCabe. Are there any questions for you? Thank you. All right. So we have one speaker. Is it Don Brown?
President Harden and council members. My name is Don Brown. I'm a member of Bread organization. The Bread office is located at 404 South Third Street, Columbus, Ohio, 43215. I support 0275-2019. I would like to tell you about my brother-in-law. He is 59 years old. He is a hard worker. About four years ago, he began struggling to make ends meet. He broke his hand in a related work injury, which led to three surgeries. That really impacted his ability to work and to end up receiving SSD. Shortly after that, his building caught on fire, and the only way out was to jump out a window, which led to a broken leg. He started working a lot of odd jobs. After that, a lot of odd jobs, after to keep his bills paid. Last year, he found out that he had heart condition. The medication is extremely expensive. He also has respiratory problems. He has to choose between paying for his rent, or paying for medication, or paying rent or transportation. When he doesn't have any money for, for public transportation, he walks long distance to get to where he needs to go. This struggle has led him to food pantries, asking for help for his family members, including his 86-year-old mother, my wife, and I. We help the best we can every month. He needs help. He has been on a list to get a Section 8 housing for over a year. There are so many people in this situation. We are gladly to know that Mayor Ginter is taking the initiative steps with the ballot initiative and trust, land trust. Research shows that more funding is needed to address our housing crisis, funding for general fund budget, and additional to the ballot initiative seems reasonable. Bread has two requests for the city. Encourage developers to set aside a new housing unit for families that makes less than $42,000 a year. Give an additional $5 million per year to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. What would it take for the city to grant these requests?
Thank you, Mr. Brown, for certainly coming down and, and your work with Bread. I know that, so this is a zoning, but I'll try to answer both your questions. So the first question, the first is that, you know, there's money putting into the bond package to support affordable housing. There's about $50 million that's in the bond package should the residents of Columbus pass that bond package, so, because we, we absolutely know that we have, we need more affordable housing units in the City of Columbus. So that would be kind of one answer to that. In terms of the, and so I just, you walked in, is the, the Director of Development, Director Shoney, who could also share more information with you regarding the work that we're going to be doing around affordable housing, certainly as you mentioned, the land trusts, and, and this committee is also chaired on council by Ms. Shayla Favor. So they will be able to work with you on that. But I also want to address this particular, because this particular zoning. I, I really want this variance, I should say. So this variance, as, as Mr. McCabe stated, would be for individuals who are making $16,000 to $61,000 a year. And I want to applaud the developers that are really working within this space. And I would have to say that Woda Cooper is a developer that is working in this space to make sure that individuals between, I guess, at $16,000 a year to $61,000, and this what this particular variance is, and he's working with community, Community Development for All People, and I'm sure that Bread is well aware, that organization. And so that's what this is, and so this is, this, this variance certainly is in line with what the work that Bread wants to see happen in our community. And it really does require a public-private partnership to be able to do this work. And so we are happy we have some developers who are saying, I want to be in this space, but they understand that there is a critical need for affordable housing at the amounts that we're talking about here. And so we want to continue to hope that they will continue to do development. I've been, I personally have been to a number of their projects, but there are also some other developers that are also in this space. It also requires people to get low-income tax credits to do this work also. So it requires, there are a lot of pieces to make this work, and, but I am appreciative of those developers who have decided this is the space they want to be in. So thank you for coming down. Are there any other comments or questions for my colleagues? Thank you. If you turn to your back, turn around, you'll see the gentleman that's standing waving his hand. That's Director Shoney, and I'm sure he and Councilmember Favor will be happy to work with you.
We have, we have some letters for council members.
We'd love to get them. So someone, thank you. Thanks for coming down. All right. If there, are there any other questions for my colleagues? All right. Well, again, this legislation is a multi-unit development. The city's apartment, the city department's recommendation is approval, and the Columbus South Side Air Commission's recommendation is approval 11-0. And based upon those facts, and just certainly hearing from our speaker, I would, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Favor, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That's all I have in zoning this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Favor, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
We stand adjourned. We will reconvene, regular meeting number five momentarily. May I get a motion to reconvene, meeting number five? Is there a second? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Favor, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
We are going to now go to the Public Utilities Committee, which President Protem Stenziano chairs.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight in Public Utilities, bring forward ordinance 0125-2019 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to renew the Professional Engineering Services Agreement with Black and Veatch Corporation for the Hap Creamian Water Plant intake structure and low-head dam rehabilitation project for the Division of Water to authorize an appropriation transfer in expenditure of up to $1,471,800 within the Water General Obligations Bond Fund, and to amend the 2018 capital improvements budget. The Hap Creamian Water Plant is an essential and integral component of the Columbus area water supply and treatment infrastructure. This project will address aging infrastructure associated with processes that are necessary for adequate drinking, water supply, and treatment. If there are no questions or comments for my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Favor, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next ordinance, 0126-2019, authorize the Finance and Management Director to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreements for the purchase of sewer treatment chemicals for the Division of Sewerage and Drainage, and to authorize expenditure of $2,735,000 from the Sewerage Operating Fund and to declare an emergency. This will allow the Division of Sewerage and Drainage to continue to treat the waste and provide reduced backups and overflows to the citizens of Columbus and surrounding communities. If there are no questions or comments for my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Favor, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Ordinance 0134-2019, authorize the Director of Finance and Management to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchasing agreements for the purchase of Centrex and Data Services with AT&amp;T for the Division of Power, the Division of Water, and the Division of Sewerage and Drainage, and to authorize expenditure of $650,000 from the Electricity Operating Fund, $518,600 from the Water Operating Fund, and $388,000 from the Sewer Operating Fund. These services will allow the Division of Power, the Division of Water, and the Division of Sewerage and Drainage to better communicate with various sites and share real-time data to increase efficiency and meet operational needs on a daily basis. If there are no questions or comments for my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Favor, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Ordinance 0166-2019, authorize the Finance and Management Director to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreement for the purchase of rental of construction equipment with an operator for the Department of Public Utilities, and to authorize expenditure of $2,610,000 from the Sewerage Operating Fund and $100,000 from the Water Operating Fund. The services will be used to rent equipment with an operator for various projects beyond the scope of our owned equipment. If there are no questions or comments for my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Favor, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next ordinance, 0169-2019, authorize the Finance and Management Director to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchasing agreements for the purchase of plant, manufacturer, specific parts, equipment, and services for the Division of Sewerage and Drainage, and to authorize the expenditure of $1,298,000 from the Sewerage Operating Fund. The parts, materials, and services that will be used for the Division of Sewerage and Drainage, Jackson Pike Water, wastewater treatment plant, and the Southerly wastewater treatment plants to maintain and repair equipment, and for the rehabilitation of various processes throughout the plant. If there are no questions or comments for my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Favor, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
And the last ordinance we have in Public Utilities is ordinance 0229-2019, authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to modify and increase the current contract to obtain capacity and energy for the Division of Power in accordance with terms and conditions of the contract with AEP Energy Partners Incorporated to authorize expenditure of $55 million from the Electricity Operating Fund and declare an emergency. Through the request for proposal process and waiving the relevant sections of Chapter 329 of the Columbus City Codes, the Department of Public Utilities negotiated with suppliers to provide a contract for electrical energy at a fixed price. Four proposals were received. Upon review, it was determined that AEP Energy Partners met all the division's requirements and offered the lowest-priced and most responsive proposal. If there are any questions or comments for my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Favor, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
That's all we have in utilities. Move on to rules.
Please.
Thank you, President Harden. Begin with ordinance 0352-2019, to amend Chapter 598 of the Columbus City Code in order to clarify and amend regulations for short-term rental operations and hosting platforms. For those that remember, this ordinance and legislation is providing an update to the current Columbus City Code for Chapter 598 to include and clarify regulations for short-term rentals. After our initial passage, continuous clarification and amendments were deemed reasonable and necessary. The city's goal has always been to balance the well-being and interest of city residents and visitors while allowing short-term rentals to operate and become a piece of the economic and tourism fabric in our city. Research and a nationwide scan of policies in other cities informed the legislation, as well as numerous meetings with impacted stakeholders such as residents, community members, the hosting platform, short-term rental hosts, the hotel-motel representatives, tour and industry realtors. I want to thank you all for your involvement in those ongoing meetings. We've heard the recommendations as well from the Office of the Mayor, the City Auditor, City Attorney, and our residents. This ordinance will amend 2145-2018 to include changing the definition of dwelling to mean any, to mean any building, structure, or unit on the same tax parcel sharing the same mailing address which is occupied or intended for occupancy in whole or in part as a home, residence, or sleeping place for one or more persons, requires a notarized affirmation that a completed background check has been performed by either the hosting platform or the host, requires hosts to notify in writing guests if surveillance equipment is used on the property. If a guest does not consent, the host must deactivate the surveillance equipment for the duration of the stay, removes section 598.04D containing language regarding memorandums of understanding between the city and short-term rental platforms. And also, I will be moving to amend this legislation to emergency in order for it to be put in place before the March to emergency in order for it to be put in place before the March 1st, 2019 enforcement deadline. That's been the ongoing goal. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? All right. Seeing none, I'd first like to request to amend, as submitted to clerk.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Sensiano, Tyson, President Harden.
Next, I request to amend to emergency.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Sensiano, Tyson, President Harden.
And finally, I'd like to move for passage.
I would like to say, Chair, I'm sorry. Just, I want to thank you for your leadership in this space. You've done a lot of work, spent a lot of time on this issue of short-term rentals, and just greatly appreciate it. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Sensiano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you for those words, and again, really appreciated all of our community's engagement and your all's involvement in the ongoing discussions. Which leads us to the final rules, ordinance I have in rules, ordinance 0362-2019 to amend and act and repeal various provisions of Chapter 371 of the Columbus City Code in order to establish a regulatory tax framework for short-term rentals and to standardize the levying collection and allocation of all short-term rental-related taxes. So, the goal of this legislation was will standardize the levying, collection, and allocation of the short-term rental taxes. I do want to point out, this is not a new tax, in that this ordinance amends the tax code to allow the city collect hotel motel bed tax from short-term rental hosts and creates the definitions for short-term rental guests, short-term rental, permanent occupants, and hosting platforms, allows the City Auditor's Office to retain .5% of the collected gross revenue from the city's portion of the collected tax on short-term rentals to defray the expenses incurred in the collection and administration of the tax, relieves hosts remitting taxes if the hosting platform collects the full and exact amount and remits to the city of Columbus. Those hosts that do not use a platform that remits taxes to the city of Columbus will be required to file individually. Again, the goal is for this ordinance to complement the previous one and be in place before March 1st. And so, with that, and no questions, hopefully none. I will move to amend to emergency.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Sensiano, Tyson, President Harden.
Admit it.
And move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Sensiano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
That's all I have in rules tonight.
Thank you, Chair. All right. I was sorry. I couldn't remember if we passed. Councilmember Tyson, we're still in, in the Rules and Reference Committee. We have one, one more ordinance, ordinance 0127, for which Councilmember Tyson will chair its passage. Councilmember Tyson, floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, President Harden. I have ordinance 0127-2019 to amend various sections of the Columbus Code, the zoning code Title 33, and the building code Title 41, in order to codify similar qualifications for membership on various public boards and commissions staffed by the Department of Building and Zoning Services. And I would like to have Director Messer to be able to provide information regarding this particular amendment. Director, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, President Harden, other members of council. So, this legislation impacts the boards and commissions that are staffed by Building and Zoning Services. Those would include the BZA Development Commission, Graphics Commission, HIC Board, and some other boards. The current code essentially includes several references. We remember, sometimes has to be a City of Columbus resident, sometimes has to be a Franklin County resident, and unfortunately, what's not reflected is that the City of Columbus actually stretches beyond Franklin County in certain locations, such as Delaware County, Fairfield County. And so, what we're proposing in this legislation is to allow counties that are contiguous to Franklin County also be included, not just Franklin County. The language continues to either require or adds requirements that the majority of the boards or members be City of Columbus residents, but under this change, essentially, it would allow residents of the city who might not live in Franklin County to also serve. We believe this change will allow us to continue to fill our boards and commissions with the most qualified individuals without that restriction, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, thank you for the hard work on this, Director Messer, working with your team, and now I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Sensiano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committee this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Seeing no further business coming for council, may I get a motion to convene, to adjourn? Yeah, sorry. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Sensiano, Tyson, President Harden.
Meeting number five is adjourned.